Thanks for coming, everybody. We have a National Grid public hearing at 7:15, so we're gonna work around a couple things until we get there. Eric, I mean tonight it's gonna be pretty brief, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'll do is we'll pick a, we'll pick a couple things up here. All right. New grants, gifts, and donations seen, correct? Nothing new submitted. New business, we have an appointment to the Newbury Police Department. Brad DeSenzio, Emergency Communications Officer. 5:21, 2018 to 6:30, 2019.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? Would you like to add your thing, Chief Riley?
Brad is gonna be our first Emergency Communications Officer, which would be hired strictly outside of the police and strictly for communications at this point. Great kid, has a stringent background test, and will be in good addition to the party.
Excellent.
And thanks very much.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have a request for public property use slash special permit. Jane Wild, Historical Society of Old Newbury. Coastal Gardens of Old Newbury, 39th Annual Garden Tour. June 9th and 10th, 2018. Banner on the upper green backstop and townwide lawn signs. May 25th, 2018 through June 11th, 2018.
Motion, second.
All right, would you like to speak to the event?
No, I just, we do this every year. We appreciate your indulgence. We'll just have the signs up for a couple weeks, advertising the garden tour, and then we'll take them down right after.
Okay.
Okay?
Fair enough. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming in. Another request for public property use slash special permit. John McGinnis, John McGinnis Auctioneers, Amesbury, Mass. This would be for the use of the lower green to conduct an auction for the Robert Barton estate. 277 High Road, from June 20th to June 25th, 2018. Auction set up is Wednesday, June 20th to Friday, the 22nd, 9 to 5. Auction is Saturday, June 23rd to Sunday, and Sunday, June 24th, from 9 to 5. Auction breakdown time is Monday, June 25th, from 9 to 5.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion?
Parking. What are they gonna do with parking?
If you read approval, the chief required that there be a detail as well as a cruiser in that area because there could be problems.
I mean, chief, where will the cars go?
The gas is the goodest one.
I mean especially if, you know.
Right. Along the legal parking spots, along the green, and they'll have to come up with some type of parking.
Because you can't park on a state highway like other places.
No, they'll have to come up with a parking plan, and we'll have a detail officer out there who'll show that traffic can flow through and be as safe as possible.
Didn't we have issues with the trees, the loops parking around?
Yes, they won't, vehicles won't be able to park there. There's absolutely no parking. And then, they've done, we've worked with this auction company in the past, and they're pretty thorough with the stuff. And if they come up with a proper plan, it shouldn't be an issue.
Good luck. Who'd that been for us?
Excuse me, I'm Dan Muir, I'm the director at John McGinnis Auctioneers. If you have any questions. We do a lot of parking issues, and we'll do whatever they tell us. There's Cottage Road, Newman Road, there's a number of streets on the side that hopefully we'll be able to use one side of the street on that. We anticipate a good crowd at the beginning of the event, and usually as they go along, people drift away and it won't be so cumbersome.
So you'll have to cross them?
Absolutely, we require the detail officer and mark unit to be, to be used, so we should have ample personnel there to help out.
Is that common, people go through, you know?
Yeah, oh absolutely, absolutely.
How do you tell how many people go to something like that?
Well, it's a public event, and there'll be a lot of people that'll be interested, there'll be a lot of rubberneckers that'll just come and see what's there and then leave. It's a, it's a unique auction in that the Barton family, it's actually, it was the Plumbers, they came over on the John and Mary, on the ship. So there's things that go back to the beginning of Newbury, as the colony was settled, right up through, all kinds of treasures that right, come right from the get-go of Newbury. So it'll have a lot of local interest, that's why we'd like to have it right there.
It's a very historically significant auction.
It's, it's an unusual situation, and Mr. Barton was a pretty private person, and he set up a trust. So all the funds from this, after the, the costs of doing it, are going to different charities. So he doesn't have any heirs, so everything's going to charity, it's all said and done.
Now, was Mary's original house sold already before this, and the contents of that, is that in this?
Are you talking about 277?
Yeah, the one on, no, the one on High Street up near the top of.
No, we're gonna be selling that house too, number 12?
Yeah, so none of, none of that stuff is?
I've already cleaned that house up, yeah.
So this stuff?
I'm adding that into this, because really, Mary and her son, Robert, they brought that stuff up from the house. Everything basically that came from the Plummer family and the Humphrey family.
Made it out of there.
And ended, made it to this house. So there's a number of different generations, there's about 10 generations from different branches, and Robert was adopted, and his, everything ended up with him, and now he has passed away, and all other things have to be sold. We work for the trust.
Awesome.
The one question I've had, which has actually been a little bit answered by yours, is when a for-profit entity uses public land, do they usually make a donation to the town or anything like that? And so, I was curious, we often host non-for-profit or town entities on town land, but a for-profit entity seems like a different.
The only established thing we have is for his mantra field, in which we charge a fee for town property usage. We have not historically charged one, but that's something that actually I've had a conversation about earlier in the week.
Okay. Well, having not done it in the past, I don't think it's appropriate at this point, but I think it is something we might want to think about for the future as far as differentiation between non-for-profit and town organizations and other communities or properties.
If I could just add one more thing, kind of in that regard, we would also be open to, if, I don't know if there's anyone in the community, whether it be the Historical Commission, or if it be the Fire Department or Auxiliary, if they were here to do a food concession stand or something like that, you know, that will have a good crowd there. People, if there's some organization that's a charity or a non-profit in town that would like to step up and do that, would be welcome to have a food, you know, presence there.
All right, Heidi?
No.
Oh. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thanks, it's an exciting sale of lots of significant things there.
Yeah, everybody come.
Thank you.
Request for public property use, special permit, Byfield Community Arts Center, 5th Annual Byfield Music and Arts Festival. Manta Field, 81 Central Street. 1:00 PM Friday, June 22nd, 2018, through 11:00 AM Sunday, June 24th, 2018.
Motion, second.
You wanna say anything about the event? Come on up.
We've got a really exciting event planned this, this year. We've had some glitches along the way in past with our permitting and that sort of thing, which we're hoping to get resolved, but we are very excited to, to be bringing this festival again. We get a lot of feedback from people all over New England that this is the best festival that they attend, and this is coming from people that go to a lot of different events that are similar. So we're very proud to be putting Byfield on the map and sharing what we have here as, as resources. We have a lot of local entertainment as well as local craftspeople, so we're excited to be doing it, and we thank you for your support.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Excellent.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One Day Liquor License Mercury Brewery and Distribution Company Incorporated, Ipswich, Mass. Byfield Music and Arts Festival, Manta Field, 81 Central Street, Byfield. Saturday, June 23rd, 2018, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? One Day Liquor License Newbury Port Brewing Company, Newbury Port, Mass. Byfield Music and Arts Festival, Manta Field, 81 Central Street, Byfield. Saturday, June 23rd, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Motion, second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let you get this one, Jeff.
Funny, you take one person out of the equation. One Day Liquor License True North Brewery, Ipswich, Mass. Byfield Music and Arts Festival, Manta Field, 81 Central Street, Byfield. Saturday, June 23rd, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One Day Liquor License Caleb Noble, St. Lysider, Raleigh, Mass. Byfield Music and Arts Festival, Manta Field, 81 Central Street, Byfield. Saturday, June 23rd, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a couple minutes, yeah. New Business License JR Auto Sales, I like the name. Jamie and Rachel Araso, 86 Newbury Putt Turnpike, Used Cars Dealers License, Class 2. Anyone here from JR Auto Sales, okay?
Motion to approve the license?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Johnny?
I don't have time.
Yeah, gonna take a few minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back to you. Yeah, we can get a little bit of correspondence, we received a letter of resignation from Les Jones on the Conservation Commission, you know, I'd like to thank Les Jones for his service to the town.
Absolutely, I mean he's been serving for most of my life, so.
Long time.
Long time, yeah.
Pass someone to do a letter of appreciation.
Yes, absolutely, just talk about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Les. Thank you, Les Jones. We received another letter from the Commonwealth of Mass Department of Telecommunications Cable regarding the license expiration notice, which we're aware of with the town's contract with Comcast, which is currently being negotiated. We have an invitation from the senior class of 2018, Triton High School Institution for Saving Stadium, Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, at 11:00 AM. And we also received an invitation from the town of Amesbury, Massachusetts, to Amesbury, Massachusetts, Incorporated Day, in Amesbury City Hall Auditorium, Sunday, May 27th, 2018, at 11:00 AM. All right, do we have someone from Grid? All right, let's, 7:15, we'll jump into that.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, how are you?
Hi. Can't build the National Grid? One more reading?
Yeah. Notice is hereby given that the Newbury Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, at 6:15 PM at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. On the petition of National Grid and Verizon, New England Inc., Plan Number 2586602, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting features along and across the way 153 Main Street. National Grid to remove a tree guy and install a stub pole anchor and guy. Also for permission to lay and maintain the underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connection with such poles and buildings as each of said petitions may desire for distributing purposes.
Hi, Ken Dobie, National Grid, and at the town's request, we propose to remove a tree guy and put a stub pole, otherwise known as a support pole, across the street to keep the line straight and stopping from leaning the opposite way.
Okay, any, no digging under the road, anything like that?
No.
The only other question I had was about the underground laterals, cables.
That's a standard.
Standard form, I figured it's money.
Put in every town.
I looked at it and thought, why?
That's the most, that's questioned the most often, believe it or not.
Yeah, it seems pretty, pretty mundane as far as, you know, is National Grid moving to replace most tree guys with poles?
Yeah, tree guys are a thing from the past.
Yeah.
As trees are going down, they're always gonna get replaced with a stub pole.
Okay.
Just for the sake of a question, that probably needs an answer in my mind. When you look at a pole, and I imagine everyone's different, especially if it's a transformer or carrying a lot of weight, when are they seriously leaning poles, something that, I know you guys ride around and look, but I mean, when poles get, I don't know the degree, but when they're like that, are they an issue? For the most part, they look worse than they are, and basically, most of the time it's happening, I hate to blame a particular company, but it's the heavy cables of Verizon that are on the poles that cause that leaning, and it's usually not us at the top of the pole.
No kidding? Today's Fiber Optics, all that stuff's heavier than it used to be, though, huh?
Yeah. Well, because there's some poles that are pretty, that are leaning pretty good, you know? We'll get, we'll get a report and say, do you want to go check out that, someone's got a concern. We'll look at it, and it's, if I could see the anchor getting pulled out of the ground somewhat, I'll say, I'll write up a report, say, put a new anchor in. Good. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we're.
Well, we'll make a motion.
Do we have to have a motion to approve?
Have we approved it?
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Now do we have to vote up?
Out of the public? Most of us. To the public hearing?
Was subliminal now, Jay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Eric Sorensen.
Michael Rosen, representing Mr. Sorensen. So, beginning of April, unfortunately Eric found out that somebody working on the project had gone into the wetlands and cut down trees. When Eric found out, he called his engineers to go out there and make sure that they had not violated the limits of work, and in fact, they had. As soon as Eric heard that, he contacted Doug at Conservation, self-recorded it, had they got a phone off the site, and has taken every step since then to adequately ensure the proper protections have been put in place, and that any activities at the site have been taken only in coordination with municipal officials from the town of Newbury. Since that time, we have gone before Conservation, we have presented a plan to Conservation, we have submitted the plan to Planning, and we have submitted a plan to the Board of Selectmen. Conservation is waiting to hear back from Planning and Selectmen. Planning and Selectmen are looking to schedule a joint meeting, I believe the proposed date is June 20th. In addition, we think that it would be hugely beneficial to both boards to have the opportunity to do a site walk beforehand, so that the meeting in June 20th could be as effective as possible. Since, between April 1st and this date, we have taken some steps, again with municipal approval, the larder was allowed to remove the trees that were cut. That's been doing our new supervision with tree logs, calculations, and submitted reports. Everything that's been removed, we've been coordinating with the town to make sure the town knows exactly what's going to be moved at what. There were some, there was some site work that was allowed, including the demolition of the home and the well.
And was there any?
And I think that's it at this point, so at this point, the project is kind of at a standstill, the logs were removed, the last logs were removed today. There is a pile of stumps there that we have reached out to the building department to see if we can get permission to move them, as we believe they're just sitting there and they're, you know, they're not doing any good, and they pose a hazard, and they could be done, they can be removed without getting angry right near the wetlands or the limit of work. I'm trying to think if there's anything else at this point that we're looking to do, I don't think that's it. So, other than that, I think tonight we are just looking to schedule the joint meeting and schedule a site visit.
Correct, we need to schedule. The time, I guess the planning board's looking at the 20th.
That's a Wednesday, right? So that's your meeting, so we join you?
Yeah, it's a planning board meeting, so at 7:15.
I may not be able to attend that meeting, because I may have a work conflict, I will find that out shortly, but I can mull in for the one meeting if necessary, so.
Yeah, and we will have to open public hearing before a site walk, before a site walk.
Okay, you can't do a site walk that isn't public, that you can just?
I'd feel more comfortable opening the public hearing before we engage in a site walk.
Okay.
Upon advice from Town Council.
Okay. The one John we've gotten is just that the damage was done on April 1st, and at this point, by the time you get into the public meeting and schedule it, it's gonna be a longer period of time.
I understand, but we need to open the public hearing before we engage in a site walk.
Okay.
That's the advice I'm getting from Town Council, so that is what we're gonna do. Okay. Do we have a motion to set the date of public hearing?
Motion to set the date for the June 20th meeting at?
7:15.
7:15. Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Rosen, thank you, Eric.
Do we need to accept those, or is just giving? I don't know if we had to formulate those or not, because it's good enough, that is good enough for me. A motion to accept the remediation plans? Or the modification of the special permit?
Should we be accepting anything before we open public hearing?
That is, yeah, that's the, the plan.
Okay, just checking.
Modification to the special permit.
It's starting to ring on my second there.
Presentation tonight, so you can accept that.
Okay. A second?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
That will be part of the public hearing.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right, Don Jobs.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm all right. So I made a little presentation, an email during the agenda about Memorial Day regarding this year, but also the previous years and what I do in regards to Memorial Day. So the way I view it is Memorial Day, I always treat it as more than just one day a year in this town, we do it the whole year. So this may not work, but it worked at all. So it's kind of long, but we did everything from last year what we did. She didn't figure it out, if not, I'll just.
I'm gonna be no help there.
Yeah. So, what we do is, I break down from the beginning of the year last year, and I'll show it in the slides if it ever works. We hired someone, so I started a volunteer group called Preserving Newbury, it's just a group name, as the act, as the veteran grave officer. We use the kind of, it's a little more appealing to recruit volunteers to do the work that we're doing, because it's a little, it's, the veteran grave officer is not a really appealing name to recruit people, so we do a thing called Preserving Newbury, and the idea is that we're preserving the history of the town through the, through volunteer efforts. So the first thing we did last year, to build off of what we've previously done, is we hired an expert who has old, 20 years in restoration work. She has worked nationally and locally restoring headstones and doing resets. So we hired her last, last spring, she came out, and she done work, did work with me. Is there a clicker, was I just?
Yeah, it's doing.
In there? All right, Tracy, work with me. So Tracy, you guys may know her, she does a lot of my work behind the scenes. So here's the year and the deal.
All right, so do you want to sit here? I don't want to belong here, I'm just sorry.
I'm gonna go as fast, but not too fast, I'm gonna have to explain.
Yep.
But really, Memorial Day for me is more than just one day.
Where was most of this work done?
Byfield.
Okay.
Byfield, and so, we did work in First Parish, we did work in Byfield, this year we're working in Evergreen and the cemetery behind it. So the idea is, we're gonna eventually go through all the cemeteries in town and assess them and start doing some sort of work, to see what the needs are. So here's Tamara, she owns a company called Historic, Historic Greystone Services. She's been doing this work since 1998. She has worked with several historic societies, cemetery commissions, and town boards to assess, preserve, and restore gravestones throughout the country. So, I figured, if I'm gonna have someone teaching the other do work, I want someone that has the experience and the know-how, and has been approved by several city and town officials nationwide. She just came back from a trip from Louisiana, working down there. So, she's not cheap, but she's very knowledgeable, and she's very crafty. So, last year, the interview question, Jeff, we were in Byfield Cemetery, and we did two stone, well, we set two stones there. This one we literally pulled out of the ground, cleaned it, and put it back in, it was a Civil War marker. She told us the safetys, the lookout for, the chemicals to use, what not to use, how to handle it, and this is a veteran grave, so the memorial aspect is the whole year, not just one day. So everything we do for Memorial Day wraps around what I do year-round. And here's Tracy, her, going over scrubbing techniques, cleaning, and you can see the stone is literally black and dark brown. The brown peaches in the dirt, the blackish was exposed. Okay? And then there's the before and the after picture. So, we have done a few of those since then, and also, you'll see more of them, but you see the impact and the difference that we've been able to make for this individual. If you go today and see that stone, it's actually pearl light. So over time, the chemical we use will actually clean it naturally through weather, in just if you make.
What was the material of this?
It's called D2, it's the same chemical they use to clean the Lincoln Memorial, the Capitol, the White House, and Arlington uses it.
What is the material of the stone?
Oh, I crazy.
This, this Civil War marker is, it's marble.
Wow. It's amazing how far they can settle.
Oh, it's crazy, it's crazy, and this one isn't even buried, that we're trying to figure out how to get them off. So it sinks over time, there's the Civil War, you know, and this one, she actually showed us how to use a pulley to do a full reset. So as you can see in the picture on the left, it was slanted, she used a pulley, she pulled it up for us, shows how to do it safely, and then we put it back in and cleaned it. You can see on the bottom of the stone, the stain from the dirt, and it actually, it almost non-existent today, if you walk over it. So we hired her, we did the workshop, we paid for that through the money we raised through the wreaths, because we want to kind of expand the work we can do, you know? This stems back to the first presentation I gave you guys regarding First Parish. I gave the 10, the five, 10-year goal, so this is one of the things I wanted to do. So building off of this, we did two stones without reset, just cleaning them, you can see the before and afters, and it's night and day, and the stone on the top left, the top right, is actually almost white now. So as, as time goes on, they get better. So Memorial Day last year, on Memorial Day weekend, you can see this, me and myself, I'm a 12-year-old girl. Before this, we went out, we placed the flags, this is, that was her second time doing it with us. We also trained her how to evaluate the stone and clean the stone. So right in this picture, we're actually digging up the stone to pull it up. And I explained to her, well Tracy did too, you see on the left that the, the shield is different? So in the, in the Civil War, there's actually a few different Civil War markers. One for the Union, one for the, the South, the North, and then there's also different shaped peaks, and you can see those most commonly in Arlington. So we explained her a little history lesson, you know, and then she was fully engaged in what we did. You could see Tracy working with her mom and the 12-year-old on the bottom right, scrubbing away, cleaning away.
I think what's remarkable about this is how, how large those Civil War markers actually are.
They're huge, and they're heavy.
And how much they, it takes to excavate that.
So, I have injuries from Afghanistan that have gotten worse now from a car accident, so I won't be pulling these stones out this year. My back is pretty jammed up, but we're hoping to raise money eventually to buy our own pulley, because that would make this a lot easier. We do have boards.
If you had a way for people to donate money to the?
So, we, we're teaming, there's, I'll, I'll show you later, we are teaming with a non-profit to do that, with another idea, and we're gonna be funneling that kind of resources through a non-profit. I could non-profitize Preserving Newbury, but I'd rather bring in more people to develop teamwork and hopefully increase the number of volunteers. and, and hopefully increase the number of volunteers. And you'll see, we've had roughly about four hundred volunteers throughout the year last year working with us in some capacity, doing a memorial of sort for veterans. So this is just an example.
And this should go on a, a television, you know?
Yeah, so the workshop was, and I have no problem doing it for anything regarding what we do. I think it's pretty cool work.
It is, it's impressive.
So here's the little girl, she's twelve, she's now thirteen. She may be coming up again next, uh, this weekend. But you can see, she's wearing gloves, she's scrubbing it, and she loved it. Here's the stone after. She, we put the dirt back in, we reset the stone. She helped us make sure it was straight. There's a certain percentage underneath the ground and above ground. And mom had to leave, but mom was not allowed to leave because she did not wanna leave.
She didn't like it, she had a birthday party to go to and she didn't wanna go.
She didn't wanna go, which is good, because it's, it's great to engage these children in this way. And it's also a history lesson and it's an educational piece all around. So it's unique.
Don't you bring in some kids?
Oh, you're gonna see the, the crying.
Okay, all right, calm down, I'm sorry.
So here's, this was taken at the end of last year, it's pearly white. And when you saw it earlier, it was black. So you can see the impact, you know, the work, this is the work we're doing, is making. So, Memorial Day weekend last year, we also retired flags. That box down the street has collected several thousand flags and just been up. And this is not slowed down. We have a veteran in town that takes care of it for me. And he's saying he's averaging between six to twelve flags a week consistently. And I have a lot of flags in my house in the box, and so does he. So, last Memorial Day, we did a retirement ceremony at Byfield Fire. We had the Ainsbury Scouts come out, and they all earned a little badge. They taught us how to fold the flags, and then we retired them. And then all the embroidered stars, we had cut off, and we donated them to peace greeters, which will get recycled and given up to veterans when they come home. Here's the veteran I was telling you about in town, Bill Demento, I think his name is. And there's the little scouts doing flag in town. There's a scout here.
What fun.
And then here's, we had a little table set up where we were actually cutting up the stars on site to bring up the peace. So it's a, it's a full circle. And then, what you were saying, Chuck. This is gonna be my fourth year, last year was my third year, working with Triton. We get the high school soccer team, football and soccer team every year. It's about fifty to sixty students that come out, around Columbus Day. So the last two years, we worked in First Parish, we did like landscaping work. This year, we used our training that we invested into, and we taught the, the students how to clean the stones. And within three hours, we cleaned about thirty stones, thirty-five stones, thirty-five stones. And here's some of the pictures. It was great, they loved it. We also made a history lesson for them too. We explained the veteran service on the stone. There's a lot of old veterans in the Byfield Cemetery, as Chuck could know. So it was really good. I'm hoping we can do something like that again this year, but we're trying to expand the audience here, not just do one cemetery. So, we do have the kids, these are the kids from last year. There were workhorses. As soon as we went over, we do a little training on what to do and what not to do. And they worked solid until treats arrived at the end. I'm a food guy. So we bought thirty-five pizzas from Domino's. And we fed every student after, after the session. And that's kind of our way of saying thank you for your help. They didn't have to come, you know, the coach probably made them, but they didn't have to come. And that money was paid for, again, through the resets. Now, that money only goes so far, so we do end up coming out of our pockets a little bit. But, the work we do is well worth it. And I wanna talk about another idea I have, to help raise more money to tackle this memorial aspect. So, this program, well, this event, we see that, was in the Daily News, before and after. And Jim, the photographer, was there, took a lot of great photos. These are some of them that didn't make the print, but they shared them with us, it was really nice. Really nice.
Those kids did an amazing job, they were really...
Check, check, if you go down there, check him out, it's the, the side of the cemetery closest to the oldest cemetery. More across the road. If you go in that section, you see a lot of the stones look really cool, really neat. Any questions?
I guess the one question I had was, are you, when you get the big groups of volunteers, are you still focusing mostly on veteran stones?
So, yes, because technically speaking, that, there, every cemetery plot has a private own deed. So I would need permission from the family to do any work. So as a veteran grave officer, I can work on the veteran stones only, without having consent or permission. So that's what we do.
All right.
It's a good question, because some people don't know. And I had people, people ask me, and I said, I can't, unless there's consent from the person who owns the property, I can't touch the property.
Or the cemetery managers.
Yeah.
Or in some cases, you can see here, these are, it's not a military marker, and we got the permission of the cemetery caretakers and committee.
He was on site.
To, to do that, yeah.
That's tough, because the person who owns it isn't talking.
It's, it's difficult. But we, there's ways you can work around it, if you have to.
Okay.
But...
Get the crystal ball out of the picture.
We had, we had Jim Rogers on site for all the stuff we done there. And he's a cemetery supervisor, I think was his official title. Superintendent, so he was supervising us.
Many hats.
Yeah, he wears many hats, I don't know what's my pet phone. So it's good, it's a good question though. So, to pick into our biggest fundraiser, and the way we continue to honor our veterans here, is Read Across America. I started it a few years ago, I'm sure you guys remember that. So we officially maxed out Newbury. Last year, every veteran grave in town got a flag, got, got, sorry, got a wreath. And we raised money per that. We actually sold so many wreaths and had such a huge response, that we were able to cover Newbury Port with an extra additional one hundred and eighty. And, we got a lot of people involved in trying to get, bring people together on, on all of this stuff. So the elementary school kids from Newbury were involved. We had elementary school kids in Ainsbury involved. I flew a private speaker from Kansas City who was involved. We did a private, a special honor roll, honoring all the deceased veterans in town, from way back to the Revolutionary War guys, to even the veterans who passed away last year. That we had such a little moment of silence, and we played taps. It was really, really touching, and it's a moving experience. Here are all the wreaths that we collected, close to eight hundred. And we partnered up with the Army National Guard from the state, and we're storing them now at the Armory and Newbury Port, because my front porch is officially too small. And that's where they were going for a while, so now they're...
Donnie, is that number, the five hundred and something, the, really, the amount of veterans that are buried?
So those are the stones that we can find.
So maybe they could, they could potentially be...
We, we have a list.
There are definitely more, so we have lists that we're still actively working on.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah, so we grow a little bit every year, as far as what we find. But there's, there's closer to, the number is probably closer to eight hundred.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, doing the reset, remember I told you, like, they sink over time? So there potentially could be some underground. Now, we would, I use them overseas looking for bombs, they have them here, it's called a GPR, Ground Penetrating Radar. Those are very costly. So in the meantime, let's just do what we can, and reset them if we can, and increase that number. But as of now, every veteran grave out of wreath, which is five hundred and something. And then the remainder, we bumped over to Newbury Port, and we filled that entire veteran cemetery plot. Which is good, got a background to have. These are pictures from last year, Zeke, he's a, a friend of mine, he was shot down in a Chinook in Afghanistan, he's from Kansas City. So he's actually sitting at a World War, I mean, a Revolutionary War stone at First Parish. The top right are all the volunteers that came out for the wreath program. And then bottom, we did a little ceremony before, talked about it in your presentation. And we filled the firefight hall. And if you look on the side of the wall, there's some pictures we take up. And I, I'll explain that to you. So these are the Georgetown Girl Scout troops that helped us place wreaths at Thomas Parker. We're trying to, again, bring in as many people as possible to really honor, my biggest thing is the honor and respect piece. So we do it mostly in Memorial Day, but I do it, we do it year-round. So here's Newbury Port. And as you can see, there's two volunteers in the back, and every veteran grave got one.
And that, that looked really nice in the snow driving by, I had a good look at that.
Really good, it was, it was a little chaotic, I had to play phone tag with the mayor to, to get the approval, because it's actually, it's city-owned. And she was a hundred percent on board, and she's already asked me what are we gonna do again next year? But I...
This was a unique situation where, in Essex County, there was a surplus of, of wreaths that happened to be sent really in error by Read Across America, and they got divided up amongst everybody. So these weren't purchased for Newbury.
They were given, they were a gift to us.
We wanna make that clear, right? But we took the opportunity, we carpooled up and got as many as we could to cover this. So, we're hoping we can engage others to help do this again, because surely you know the location, right? It's breathtaking when you drive by.
It was nice. And then, so the pictures on the wall were teamed up from Newbury Elementary. I talked to the principal, I wanted to get the kids involved again. I know it's slippery out in the cemetery, so I don't wanna really force them, but they, the more, the more welcome they're welcome. So instead, we had the kids color in wreaths that we got. It was a little message. We displayed them on the wall, and then after the event, I brought them down to the Bedford VA Hospital. And every veteran in the hospice ward got a wreath from one of our students.
Nice.
So it was really touching, it was nice. And then we did the pickup, we're getting, a lot more volunteers came out, we had goats, yes. And I, the bonfire's been a great resource to help dump all these wreaths. That's great, it's a good, it's a good community effort.
So the Wreaths Across America people adored this, because no other community is recycling wreaths in, in this combination. And they really, really loved the fact that the goats got some.
So did the goat.
Yeah, goats really love juniper pine.
They love, they, they...
They had a great time, they had a great time.
So, Memorial Day in Newbury is not just one day, it's a year, a year, it's every day for us. This year, this weekend, we're doing all the flags. On Saturday, I forgot to email you. We're doing First Parish, and we're doing Byfield, the biggest ones. So we have, I have, I work for the Department of Veteran Services, I cover the court, uh, treatment courts and the smaller courts as well. So I have veterans that are coming out to do community service. We're also welcoming other people to join us if they want. We're probably placing about three hundred wreaths?
Oh, it's more than that.
Five wreaths, flags.
Yeah. Flags, it's probably, it's well over four hundred or two.
So it's a lot, it's a lot, many hands make light work. But, it should, it should be good. I, I know we have veterans coming down as far as Cambridge and Dorchester that are coming up to help us place wreaths.
Flags, yes.
Fl, sorry, flags, my mind is all messed up.
So we started that process actually last weekend. Four cemeteries, we did four cemeteries last weekend. The smaller ones that are more active, so that when, if families start coming early for Memorial Day, that they'll already see, we've gotten some...
And we already got some feedback, right?
Feedback.
So it's nice.
And then the older ones will take it up, etc.
Yeah, a lot of times when you visit a grave, especially in the springtime, you're not sure what the condition's gonna be. You go prepared to clean up and do some landscaping, and it's gonna be a nice surprise to...
Oh, it is. We've, we've gotten, we got feedback today, actually, from Newbury Neck, that we're gonna go visit their grandfather. And they were very happy about seeing the new flag there. And we're actually gonna reach out to them about their military marker, helping them reset and fix that. And there's a one in Byfield we talked about last week, and we're gonna help that family do as well. So it's nice, they, they don't expect it. So it's a, it's a good surprise. And I think, when they show up and they see the grave marker in a lot better of a condition than it was last year, it's also a total surprise.
Right.
Yeah, you'd be surprised how many people visit even some of these really old graves. And the flags take a beating. I think we should touch on the fact that we leave the flags out year-round here.
Yep.
And a lot of places do not. But it is partially because of the challenge we have in identifying veterans in the first place with the records, etc.
Right.
So they do take a beating, and we do replace them periodically throughout the year as we're out. And about, we always have flags.
We always, I think there's always flags in my truck, if you ever need one, let me know.
I have, I have a few.
She has some. I just bought a shed in my yard I'm setting up, just for this stuff. Because it's grown, you know? It's grown beyond the wheelbarrow and the clippers at First Parish. We've got a storage unit, it's crazy.
It's, Donnie, I think everyone should really realize that it, it's so, it's inspiring to see the continuity of what you've accomplished. Because out of anyone, I was kind of around when you were first starting at the parish.
You were here? Yep.
And, you know...
You were here when I got nominated, first year.
I was kind of around trying to, you know, because you were trying to get equipment, you didn't even, you didn't even have that, remember?
No, I was struggling.
Didn't have a place to keep anything.
Yep.
And you just persevered, and now you've accomplished all this with your help.
It's been a struggle, so... She, so she got involved, she didn't even live near here. She was in wealth then, she drove up tonight to help me out here. And she, she got involved because I, I came to Caleb crying, I need help. And we did a video of the, of the, of the project. And it reached people from California online, and just reached her and welcomed her. And she reached out, and ever since then...
I'm stuck now.
She's stuck. She helps with a lot of, a lot of organizing and a lot of the research piece, and building, we're building a database on this. It's really a year-round effort, it really is. This box has taken a life of its own. So since two thousand sixteen, we've collected several thousand flags. And each of them are properly tied through some local scout. They, they contact us, we've have, Seabrook is already talking to us about doing it, Ainsbury again, Georgetown, Groveland. Whoever's interested, we're willing to work with them. Because I feel it's important to teach our youth the respect of the flag and American history. And we can do that both through the flag box. The other piece that's, many local businesses and even the mass state police barracks here in Scotland Road, they're all pushing them to the flag box. I talked to the, the postmaster, and they're no longer giving these boxes out. So we are the only outside box in this area. So that's gonna, it's good and bad. The, the, I'll take it the bad piece with the overbunds of flags, and try to piggyback off it. To, how can I take a box that is getting a lot of foot traffic, getting a lot of flags? How can I take that to help what I'm currently doing? So, my friend Zeke and I were talking, we came up with an idea. We wanna create a vending machine. I talked to Richard Loach from the Daily News of my crazy idea. And he gave me a box, which that's on my porch, and as you can see, there's more stuff that I'm collecting for my job.
There's flags back there.
Exactly. So, what this would do is, we're taking an old Eagle Tribune or Daily News box, and we're converting it into a machine to sell American flags. Like the one behind you, the one you hang in your house, full-size American flags. And the watches, Richard told me, I can get as many as I want. So I want six eventually. One would be an American flag, and the other five would represent each branch of the service. The proceeds from this would help take care of the veteran grave issue. We raise, well, a few grand a year, two thousand dollars a year, but we're still putting up collectively probably a grand or two out of our own pockets. So we still haven't passed that threshold where we're not funding a part of this. So hopefully this could help. I have talked to a few veteran pro charities and organizations to team up with them, to work with them on the box. So all the money would come to them, they would sponsor our cleanups, or our workshops with the kids. So they would fund all the money, we just kinda help make the box realistic. There are some learning issues, and some learning curves. Here's the inside. So typically, you buy paper, you're paying in quarters. I can't tell you a flag fifteen bucks in quarters, that's, you're gonna buy your kid's piggy bank. So I gotta figure out how the point of sale's gonna work, and I've been sitting on this since December. I have a few ideas, but I'm not smart enough to make it happen. One of them is doing it mobilely, through like an app on your phone, and you just scan a code. The other one is a credit card reader, where you would swipe. And the transaction that opened the box through a credit card. I have, I know, I can power it through a car battery on the bottom with an inverter wired to the top. I've used that trick before in another project, so I know it works. And I don't want any cash being on site. I want everything remote, if possible. Again, I'm not this, not, not, not smart to figure that piece out. But I'm sure, if I reach out to the public, I was talking to a guy in Ohio for a little bit. I'm sure somebody is crafting to figure this out. And also need a lock to go with it to secure the flags from being tampered with, and it's such a security. And also, the other piece is securing the, um, the box at the location. The mailbox has a concrete slab that is bolted to, and there's no way you can steal it. This, it's not, but in the bottom, there is a space where I could put like sandbags in that car battery for power. So that might be the solution. Sorry. So my thoughts, comments, and questions on this is, would it be possible, and this is a question for the board, would it be possible to be considered to store in this box next to the other box? So when you bring, oh, there's no sense. But when you bring your old flag to retire, you couldn't walk a step or two and buy a new flag at the same time? you couldn't walk a step or two and buy a new flag at the same time? So you've got old flag, buyer flag, side by side. I would like, in theory, the first box to be there, if it's possible, that's a board decision, we can do it down the road. The other thought is, the American flag that these soldiers once protected, now protects them, and now cares for them as they used to care for the flag. That's my thought around the box idea. Myself being a veteran, the biggest thing you're proud of is the American flag. You know, you're always protecting and defending it. Now we're providing an opportunity where the flag actually cares for them, through raising money through sales. And we're expanding our mission on the honor and respect piece for our veterans in town, that continues to be year-round. And the vending machine, I think, would pair well with a disposal box. We are talking about expanding the concept beyond Newbury. I know new recruits are, I've been talking to the Chamber of Commerce there, they wanna get on board. Ainsbury and Hayville, I've also reached out and are interested in seeing if we can make this work. So, there might be one more. So yeah, my biggest, my favorite quote is, Memorial Day in Newbury is not just one day a year, it's every day of the year. And my biggest thing is, is honor and respect. So, any questions? That's a lot. And I try to look pretty fast, because I don't wanna be all night, but.
I think the first thing is just say thank you for the incredible amount of work you put into this.
It's gonna slow down a little bit this year, because my physical health is taking a huge beating. And my memory is messed up, as you can see, I'm talking, rambling on about flags and wreaths and confusing them both. So I'm gonna be a little slow this year while I recover, and kind of fine tune myself, but the work's not gonna stop. But thank you.
And thank you.
He does a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Go ahead.
When do you think that box will be ready for the?
So, that's a great question. Richard asked me the same question, and I said, I told him, I don't know. But I'm gonna tell you, because it's Memorial Day, that's why I'm mentioning it today, my goal would be opening it next Memorial Day. Because the point of the box is to honor and remember the veterans, and to care for the veterans. So if we open it in, in November, we won't give the response with the flag sales. If we open it on Memorial Day next year, it would allow us the whole year to figure out the point of sale. If we gotta develop an app to sell flags, it gives us time to do it. And then Memorial Day next year, everyone's looking to buy new flags and display. In my head, in theory. You know, so I think Memorial Day next year would be my target date. Yeah, and I will, I will bring the idea up to you guys again as we progress. I talked a little to Damon back in January, I talked to Chuck around the last week. Just to kind of, this is what I'm rambling on, but now I, I'm feeling pretty confident this is gonna be up and running next year. And I want, I want Newbury not the first. Being a little biased, but.
So, I mean, pending advice of Town Council, I mean, do we?
That's actually a decision of the fire company.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we're on the property, so.
You're gonna have one at both stations?
I can do whatever you guys want me to do. Because the disposal box, I was limited on.
Yeah, by fire, but Newbury is ours, that's why I was thinking of a straw boat.
Whatever you feel is best, I can put them anywhere.
As far as the company goes, we're thrilled to have one of them there now. It's great to watch them, they pull something away.
You can.
Shock, yeah, shock, yeah, there's a fellow. And I'll check on the company, but I can't imagine it'll be a problem, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think a straw boat and pending review by council, just to give you the thumbs up.
Before I start pounding the pavement, there really could be a PLS system. I kinda wanna toss it to you guys and get your thoughts. I will figure it out, give me time.
All those a favor?
Donnie, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a question.
Yeah, do you, do you need volunteers for the flags?
Yes. All the means. I'm not allowed to physically go up there and bend over anymore.
He's not allowed, so, we're meeting at the Upper Green at eleven AM on Saturday?
Eleven AM on Saturday.
And you can come for the hour, or come for the day?
Also, if anyone wanted to help you with like the lifting and breaking equipment for, for the resetting of the stones, is there a place to contact you so they know what to donate, or?
We have, I have emails and phone numbers.
Where, where can they reach you?
So, my personal email, in terms of very similar, it's donnieortracy@preservingnewbury.com. So I'm working on making preserving Newbury a website, that's gonna be the hub of all of this. Just so there's a general location, because veteran vape officer isn't nearly appealing to the public. So the preserving Newbury name, I think is very appropriate for what we're trying to do here. So, all they call the preservingnewbury.com and reach them there.
Excellent.
There's emails there.
Actually, some ties, eventually.
I have them somewhere.
Yeah, so it's, it's small work.
Can get my truck in, with the crane and the van.
Okay.
My new best friend.
Any questions?
No, I think.
Thank you.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. We have Peter Quimby and Chris Whitehead from.
Governance Academy.
Perfect timing.
I was, I was worried that I was going to show up and have everyone sitting here sort of waiting as you zip through the rest of your agenda.
Perfect timing.
I'm glad it worked. Well, as I think all of you know, when the, when the town conversation was going on about the new facility, over the last six or seven years, you know, we wanted to, you know, think about how we could support that, and so we indicated that we would like to direct any future contributions that we make to that project. I know that, you know, there's not a bond issue yet, and we're still a ways out, but I also recognize that the town is already incurring expenses toward that project. So, I wanted to see if we could do something before the end of our fiscal year, which is June thirtieth. And so I wanted to bring along that check for twenty-five thousand dollars to support the efforts of the town in bringing this project up and running. It'd be a great thing for, for the town, and we're happy to be able to support it.
Thank you so much, and Governance Academy, it's a, it's a, it's a historical and beautiful part of our town. We're so glad to have you, and just thank you for being engaged like you are, and, you know, you have your head to the ground for, things were struggling late in town, and I mean, it, it just, it goes a really long way, I can't thank you enough.
Well, you're welcome, we're happy to be able to do a lot, so.
Thank you.
What is the project was for, what was the check for?
For the.
Police station.
Police station.
Got it, thank you.
Motion to accept the gift?
I'll second, absolutely.
Cause I could take it now.
Cash it fast. Any discussion, any, all right, all those a favor? Thank you so much, it was just wonderful. Thank you, thank you. All right. Administrator's report, you ready for us?
Sure. I guess I'll start with the Main Street Bridge project. The project will begin on the fourteenth, and no matter how much planning you can do to try and, to try and see it through without any glitches. We did have a couple of issues arise, particularly with through traffic. Particularly with through traffic, trying to use the West River or street route instead of the marked detour areas. So, the Public Safety officials, the chiefs and the DPW were kind enough to take the time to, need to reconsider the routes, if it could be revised, what additional signage we could add to, to make it clear to residents and people traveling through the town to understand where they couldn't, couldn't traverse. It, it's been a little bit rough, but we made some adjustments. In particular, we had some complaints from a couple of the local businesses. We did revise the signage, and I think that's addressed some of their concerns. But we do wanna make sure that everybody's aware of the fact that the Main Street Mini-Mart, Anastasia's Flowers on Being, Steve's Auto Service, and Spouses Bi-Field Greenhouses are indeed open for business. And let everybody know that we expect the project to last another two months. And if they could just be patient as we work through it, I don't know if the chief said anything else to add.
Unless the board has any questions, we're enforcing the temporary road restriction for River Street. Unfortunately, I would love for River Street to be capable of handling all the traffic from Main Street, it's just not a factor of life. It's too dangerous to allow that type of traffic to go through there, so we, we have to restrict the travel through there. We're trying to be very cognizant of the residents that live on Nob Hill and, and in that area. So, we, we do heavy enforcement during the commuter hours, and then sporadic throughout the day. It's been challenging for the first week. We've had some issues with some unhappy people, and, and, but hopefully we're working through it. We're trying to work with the business owners, but the fact of the matter is, it's just too dangerous to let all the traffic through that end zone. You know, speaking with fire chief, the very first day we had the detour, there was a call for a basement fire on Nob Hill, and they had difficulty getting a fire truck through, with people walking and, and traffic, so. It, it is very challenging, we're hoping that as the commuter traffic realizes, the police are out there every morning and afternoon, they're not gonna let us through, they'll find a different route. They can still get to where they're going, a five-minute, well, I timed it like nine times now, it's six and a half minutes if you go the speed limit. And the longest it took me was nine minutes, because I was behind a school bus. But, six and a half minute detour to leave, six and a half minutes early, you can still get to the mini-mart, you get your coffee, you know? And really, that's about it, unless anyone has any other questions.
Yes.
I, I do have a question, because the garden tour on June ninth and tenth, one of our gardens is Rose Marie Brody on River Street. Is there a, and we do a map on booklet, which is also their ticket. So how would you like us to handle that? Because people are going to be coming on a garden tour, and they're gonna be going to this garden.
That'll be a question for Public Safety.
What I would suggest is, they park on West Street and walk up, as opposed to bringing a vehicle up through there.
All right.
That would be my suggestion, follow the detour, they're coming, follow the detour around and park on West Street in that area safely, and walk up, and probably, that's my gut reaction, we'll sit down and discuss it.
We have one garden in West Newbury, but the majority of them will be in Newbury Port, so I suspect they're gonna be coming down Scotland Road. Some of them will probably be coming down South Street from West Newbury if they choose to go that way.
Park at one of the businesses and walk up to the forest street end as well.
I just wanted arrangements in our book.
And if you call the police station, talk to Deputy Chief Lucy, he's my logistics guy, and he can figure that out with you. But we'll, we'll try to make as many accommodations as we can. But it, it's difficult, we have several bike races that have been scheduled that the Main Street deal is really diverting them up River Road, River Street, so it's really difficult to allow traffic to go through there. And it's a glorified driveway, and there are thirteen driveways off of that, and it's just, it's just impossible. And I wish, I really wish that it was wide enough to accommodate it, because it would make our lives so much easier, but it's not. And it's just a fact of life, and I, I apologize for people's inconvenience, but you just have to be patient for a couple of months.
It's basically one lane.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanna back that up, you know, none of us, just for the public at home, none of us take a bridge closure lightly, and it impacts everyone, businesses, individuals in different ways. And this just seems to be the best way to get over with in the shortest amount of time. And like River Street, we tried, it's just, it's impossible.
It is, we've done this in the past, prior to this board sitting with Route one A, we shut down High Road for a year and a half, Hanover Street, Middle Road, Hayes Street. We've, we've done a lot of bridge closings, and usually, in my, from my experience, a year to a year and a half project. And this one being done in two months is a godsend. It's really, I'm driving impressed with it.
And there were three other bridges, Locken Road, Hayes Street, and Newman Road, and each one of those were two years.
Yep.
So, if this one's done in two months, I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the best we can ask for, and I, I appreciate the town vetting that out and getting it done in such a quick amount of time. You know what, after two months, we'll go back to normal, so, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Just a brief ad, when they announce closures, you find you have to worry about the, all the jobs, wherever the safety of the citizens on the other side of the dash, on Georgetown's side. When Mr. Blay's asking me to go keep that as a permanent detour, I was like, well, opening up, well, there's no shoulder there, so we don't pull it aside of the road. So if we enter the road in the morning and jam up the cars, I can't pull anybody over, we can't get through, physically get through it. So it's my reason to say we shouldn't cover that up. Of course, the very first day, Murphy's Lobby in Long Island, we had recorded a basement fire in Nob Hill. I had requested previously mutually from the town of Georgetown for a structural fire or smoke in the building, so they came right down automatically. Worked well, and we got through it, I was the first one through with my car, and that is all over the area, I don't know. Move the driveway, because, but, so, we made a bit of, but the chief said it was very tight, and, but it was a little bit of a delay. So that's why I would recommend that they stay, I'll be kind of the same with the waves right now.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Janret. And I just wanna thank you, Fire Chief Janret, and Police Chief Michael Riley, always giving it their time, willing to come to these meetings. You know, always willing to do a little extra, thank you. All right, Steve, I almost forgot, you wanna come up and just say a word about the cruise night? If you'd like. Never know, you might scare a couple of cows out of some bonds.
Other than the fact that we are on for June fifteenth, four o'clock till dusk, and you don't have to bring a fancy car, you can ride Tracy's motorcycle and visit. There's gonna be a lot of interesting cats there, the way the whole.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. And old business.
I don't know if Tracy's done this.
Oh, sorry.
I just have a couple of other issues. Everyone probably is well aware of the fact that the paving was done last week on Scotland Road. It'll be followed up by structure work, and then the final coat will be done later on in the season. The field post project on the central student playing fields is nearing completion. The roof's done, the septic system connection has been made. There are still a couple of punch list items on James's list to be completed. And then the DPW will add the ramp to the building and the fencing over the next few weeks. Ogway, Gordon Martin was contracted with to do the screening of the sand that began yesterday. He was out there today as well, so the DPW has completed dressing the Harvard Way, Rite of Way. Tomorrow morning, they'll be doing the Dartmouth Way. So that should be complete, and that's it, that's all I have.
Tracy, I think we need to recognize the fact that, you know, our DPW was like mentioned twice, and you could mention them fifteen times. They're carpenters, they run equipment, they do all kinds of things, so I think James and the whole group are the, they just myriad of different things they can do.
Yep, great to work with. Oh, and I also do have some year-end transfers for execution that I provided to Ellen.
Okay. Any old business. All right, citizens' concerns. Come on up.
Wanted to briefly say that, you know, I mentioned before that we had a couple of glitches in our permitting process, and one of those revolves around a, a ruling that the Selectman made this January about increased insurance coverage. And we, we have lost a couple of vendors, because it's just simply not economically feasible for them to pay a thousand dollars extra in insurance coverage. And I, I know it's not something that's to be visited at this time, but I would like to meet with the Selectmen to discuss these issues, because, you know, we, we really like doing this festival, and we really wanna do it in Bi-Field next year. But we're, we're sort of tied down by regulations that are now in place. So I would like to, at some future date, meet with the Selectmen to discuss these issues before we start planning our next year's event, so.
Basically, this has come about because of recommendations from, we've switched to true municipal insurance.
Right, yeah, I understand.
Myers, who we use, and these are their recommendations for us for proper coverage, I mean, you're not the only one, I mean, the price has gone up. And it's something where, I guess myself, I'm kinda wrestling with right now. I'm not sure where to go, but it's definitely something that's being considered. And I mean, I, I hear your concern, and I don't want town properties to become unaffordable. And I mean, I, I hear your concern and I don't want town properties to become unaffordable needs. But we also can't forego insurance, so we're kind, we're kind of at a crossroads right now. And I think it's something that will be revisited, we're just, we gotta figure out just kinda how first, so...
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know, is this restricted on Mantle Field or is it...
No, it's townwide, it's all town. It, it's absolutely not just Mantle Field, it's the Greens, it's, it's townwide. And basically at the, at the strong recommendation slash mandation of our insurance provider. So it's, it's more costly than I would like it to be, for sure.
Me too. Thank you.
All right, thanks Heidi.
Well, I think too, Jay and I, that, you know, Tracy's starting to do a lot of work on it. We're all expressing our concerns, but it's, you know, it is our insurance company's recommendation, but no town council is in on all this too, nothing is, it's, it's, you know, you've got a, we've all gotta decide a way to try to solve this problem and then not have, you know, every resident and taxpayer in town, if something goes wrong, saying, what did you do? So, you know, it's, it's a double-edged sword, you know, if the town gets sued, it costs us a lot of money. So we are working on it, Tracy's already, there's like three or four vectors she's already looked at, you know, for solutions, and none of them are coming up that great on it, Tracy. So, and this is town council too. So it's not just our insurance company, but if we start to try to go too deeply into a lot of alternatives, we're gonna go against the recommendation of town council. So it's pretty serious.
All right, thanks Heidi. Okay, review a meeting that's, do we have? Okay, do we, we need warrants?
Motion to sign warrants.
Second, third.
All those in favor? Hi, any meeting updates?
The building committee has been meeting. We've given some direction to the architect about how to proceed on the site. I feel very confident that we're, we're moving in the right direction and I have a pretty good conceptual idea for how to use that space down there. But I'm working hard for it. If there's anything else you were at the meeting as well that we should update everybody about, I think things are moving in the right direction, never as fast as we want, but it's always moving.
Have you started to think about where you're gonna locate it?
Yes.
We're, we're looking at a couple different conceptuals on the site.
Cause you're gonna do some, you know, it's time to get warrants and stuff, it's...
Right, that's coming next, so...
Yes, they're doing their conceptual work with what we've given them as the parameters and they'll come back to us with some stuff.
Making sure we don't impact parking long-term detrimentally and also knowing that someday, some way, improvements are gonna have to be made to the fire department. We don't wanna place anything new in a...
Bad place.
Right, a foolish compromise that. Right, even though none of us might be around to see it or you never know. We gotta be mindful of that.
Have you, has the committee set on a regular meeting time or are you still going meeting to meeting?
Given some of the members' work schedules, we're, we're going meeting to meeting as of right now.
Do you intend to meet over the summer consistently?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep things, like, like Damon said, you know, things with government and, you know, going through all the steps, it takes time. So we're trying to be diligent about moving it along just as fast as we can and still be thorough.
So if people were interested in attending, they should just check the website, see what's posted?
Correct, they've been morning meetings and that's because of, you know, a, a couple of members' work schedules. It's, seems to be the most...
Time that people can make it, yeah.
Right, so, so we don't get cancellations if we're lined up in a situation where we can't make a forum.
Thank you.
I mean, none of it's easy because you guys are working against, you know, escalating costs. I mean, if we get another hurricane in the fall, and, and you might have to do some of the building in the winter and that never helps, so a lot of this stuff, it's just the way it is.
And with the economy picking up now, I mean, days of dollars, nothing's getting cheaper.
Mars, do you have the next meeting data, stop your...
It's the 31st. It's 7:00 AM.
May 31st?
Yes.
At what time?
7:00 AM.
And we have a tentative schedule, but we're confirming each meeting as we go.
Okay, thanks.
And the memorial committee meeting that Chuck's on, I attended that with him. They did a walkthrough and their meeting is happening currently down at the, at the park site around the, the post office. And they're still discussing what that's gonna look like. But it looks like they have a good group, they have a lot of disparate ideas about what should be, so I'm sure they'll be coming back to us at some point in the future once they have a more of a design to get it. But I just thought I'd swing through that meeting and see how they were doing. Lenny was there as well as a representative for Bruce Tar. So it seems like he's trying to pull in some, some help from the state as well. That's awesome. I've gotten, as I think everyone else has, a lot of complaints about the bridge, but hopefully that's moving forward and the town's taken some steps. People have been concerned about National Grid and their tie-in with the pipe. And I talked to James about that. It is scheduled, there's a lull in the construction and National Grid is scheduled to move the propane or National Ga- Natural Gas pipe during the construction lull. If they go on strike, that won't happen because there is a strike plan, oh boy. But if National Grid has to move the pipe later on, the bridge will not be closed. It'll be a detailed situation that National Grid will have to pay for. And there've been some concerns over at Mantle Field that I'm meeting with James about as far as lights being on in the middle of the night and water being turned on when it was raining. So I'm meeting with him to go over some of those concerns tomorrow.
Okay, any other updates? All right.
Mr. Chairman, can we just follow one more quick question on the building committee? That is recorded for people, they'll want to see it.
Yes, yes.
Can I report that?
Yes. All right, seeing no executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks for coming, everybody.